Um, meeting will start at 5:01.
Recording in progress.
Right, so this is really more about the transition discussions. So, so Paul, you. Oh, actually, so let's pick kind of pick up on, so the Zoom Chuck said he was willing to handle, the assessing maps, I guess since Andrea's here. I just need to get an understanding of what the process, well, what the process is, who was owning it before, and what you were proposing.
So, so all I'm proposing here is, you know, until there's a new town administrator, you know, there's nothing to do with tax maps until the spring. Everything's done for now except that we need to make sure we get our new copies of maps. So that's all I'm proposing. As for long-term, I'm not making any, any proposals for how things are managed. So, maps happen, we hope, annually, but it depends on, we went for a year without a contract. So when we get new maps today, this year, it'll be the first time in two years that we will have new maps. That creates some challenges to not have updated maps on the website or in-house when people come in and have questions and you want to be looking at a current situation and you assume you are, maybe you're not, if they're not done regularly. Because if somebody comes in and has a question about their new property, like in Scarlet Lane, and you need to know what the setbacks are, then you have to find the original plan that was approved maybe nine months ago. So it's kind of a problem not to have updated maps annually. So I would always suggest that the board do that. As far as process, the planning board approves everything that affects the assessing maps. And there are two components to the implications here. One is the maps, the visual representation of how big lots are, where the lot lines are. Those are in the maps. But then also, the assessing database from which tax bills are generated needs to also reflect that now it's a smaller size lot, or a bigger size lot, or whatever the change is when the planning board makes such a decision.
So what was your role in managing the maps?
So, the, well, basically, I oversee all of the land use functions and the implications of what are the planning board and the zoning board do. You know, so Tom is the land use administrator, has a role in that, and he reports to me. Sarah, as the minute taker and secretary of the zoning board and planning board, she does a lot more than just print agendas and notices, but she makes sure that applicants have the right application. And when applications are received, she makes sure that it has all of the labels and the fees and the butters are correct. So she does a lot of that kind of work. So I oversee that. And then when the planning board makes a decision, ultimately, the chair of the planning board needs to sign off on the plans that, depending on what it is, but if it's a subdivision or a lot line adjustment, it has to go to the registry.
Are movies digitized? No?
No. So, so the...
So your current, your task here that you mentioned, find approved plans of any subdivisions and lot line adjustments.
That's all done.
Okay.
That's all done. So that has to happen every year, but for this, that doesn't have to happen again until a spring.
Okay.
Except to say, it should be an ongoing process that whenever the planning board has, you know, something new has been approved through that process, it should get through assessing. And that part has not always happened well, and it's a work in progress. And, you know, that is up for discussion for another time of how that can be managed better.
What we don't want is a repeat of when Mark Douglas and having something like that happen, where it fell through the cracks.
I can, I'd like to interject when you, when you're ready for that.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Pardon?
Can you state your name and address?
Well, I'm here as the tax collector.
Yeah, that's okay.
So Andrea Cass, 15 Old Lane, but I'm speaking as the tax collector. So Caroline has misrepresented a bit about the tax map updates. The process was, I always did it. So when Beverly Dion was here, she did it. When she left, there was no one that took over. So I stepped in doing the tax map updates and assessing updates because of my real estate background. When Caroline transitioned to the bookkeeper, I was still doing that. And I've always managed it because when it comes to tax time, spring pickup, which is not part of the tax map updates, but it's part of the whole assessing process which correlates to the property tax bills being generated. Avatar needs to be managed. Avatar doesn't always capture everything. And I think that that was just a transition from Ed being the select board member who did everything and has, it's transitioned to a different board situation currently. As the tax collector, I need to be involved. So with tax map updates, tax maps, planning, plans weren't being recorded. Planning board approved plans were not being recorded when I started here in 2011. I don't know why, if it was just the planning board didn't have that knowledge of that's what needed to happen. So lot line adjustment plans, if they were approved, they were leaving it up to the property owner to get recorded. Well, in addition to a lot line adjustment plan, you have to have deeds recorded at the same time. So there were a lot of things that were being done halfway. So again, I stepped in and I was actually working with the planning board for a bit, that they were paying me to go to the registry to make sure that everything was done properly. I had some things going on in my personal life that I had to step away. I didn't have that additional time. So my understanding is Sarah doing that now?
And has been since you haven't been.
Since I stepped away.
But I'm not disagreeing with anything you've said.
Okay, and so she's getting that additional $50, that payment to do that.
Whatever it was, there's a stipend for each time.
Okay, so she's getting that now. So the reality is, is when I was doing that, I was maintaining that information because that information is required to get the tax maps updated. In addition to, there are lot mergers, lot un-mergers that have nothing to do with the planning board. It's just, you have to be aware of it and make sure it gets captured on the tax maps. When you sent the information this year, did you send last year's information as well?
Yes.
So everything is captured for the last two years?
And I believe I copied you on that.
Because there were only three things.
Yes.
And I think they were all this year. There was nothing...
Scarlet Lane, I think, was approved last year. But whatever it was, it was within that two-year period.
So we're covered for that.
And I think we've got it all under control.
Well, you said when it's under control, it still needs to be managed because...
Ongoing, absolutely.
Yeah, it takes months for Avatar to get it.
This is just a point in time. And it's an ongoing all the time.
You give them the information, and I'll have to follow up, and then I'll have to double check because sometimes they miss things too. Ashton does the best that she can at Avatar. So I want to be involved because again, there's a direct correlation to assessing and tax bills. That, if I'm involved in the process, I'm aware of things. So when bills are generated, if something doesn't look right, I can catch it before it gets too far down the road.
Okay. Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome.
So this comment that I wrote about, I don't want management tax tasks for Chuck only, is that pretty much doing what you were doing overseeing at a higher level?
No, well, no.
Is it what Sarah's doing?
This is a very small matter, small task, individual item. You know, maybe give it three or four more weeks, and if you don't have maps, call and say, where are maps? There's no oversight and management or supervision of Avatar or any of what Andrea alluded to. It's just make sure that if, in a certain amount of time, if you don't have maps, that somebody's calling Avatar, or at least not paying the bill for the map contract, that too. So he'll, he can manage that, but I'm not, I wouldn't want to propose that Chuck, nor would Chuck want to be in charge of any of those things. I would not suggest that.
Okay.
But I would suggest that, you know, with anything, that, you know, when you have a new town administrator in place, if that's what you're going to choose to do, the Avatar contract is in that job description. And the new, the new board with your new member and the new town administrator and the tax collector all sit down together and make sure that everybody's on the same page with how all kinds of things should happen and who's doing that.
Okay. All right, okay, good, thank you. Thank you, Andrea, for that.
So I ask you're good for this part?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Do it for her, thank you.
All right. So let's see. So it looks like we got through most of them. And I, and I did need notes. So Chuck is kind of handling well here. Salma is the point of contact for the fall newsletter, except for content.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll look at it, so I'll go ahead.
And then agenda creation. So I took, I took that for now. And then, oh.
So one note about agenda creation. I would suggest that once you have a new, once you have a new board member on board, there needs to be clarity amongst the board around what does that mean? Are you just creating an agenda and everything carries forward? Or are they really delegating to you the authority to decide that tonight's not the night to talk about something? Because that has much, you know, you always, you have always had at the end of the agenda any other business that comes before the board, so a board member can say, I don't see it on the agenda, but I'd really like to talk about this item. So on the one hand, you're kind of covered under that. But agenda control is a lot of controlling of the conversation, which is in a way kind of speaking to other board members about, you know, what we're going to address tonight or not address tonight. So just to make sure that the whole board is aligned with what that means. Because you don't have a board policy that would otherwise tell you, which would really be helpful.
Yeah, and so when we met yesterday, the agenda that I used was only what we agreed on. So we agreed by vote to move the policies out.
The policy and all that, yep.
So that was excluded. But only in the case where we agree by vote to take it off the agenda is what the approach would be for me. But otherwise, it'll move through the, but if it gets completed, like if a task gets completed, then I think...
Then I think, you know, yes, there's a vote, we're done with it. I think it's, you know, some of it is kind of obvious, but, and also, if you decide something on the agenda, the people can certainly vote to table it. I just wanted to call attention to the fact that there is some power in that and to make sure that all the board members are on board with understanding, you know, what that power really is, what it means.
Yep, yep, okay, great. Paul, is there anything else on this spreadsheet?
No, I think we covered most of the other languages.
Yeah, there was, oh, so tracking paid time off, Chuck, Google admin, Tia and Chuck, meeting notices, Chuck. I included both of them. I don't know.
So Tia operates best from a Word document. So Chuck would typically, typically, I would put something on the public calendar, although he's certainly capable of doing that. And I would send Chuck an email to say, please notice the whatever meeting next Tuesday. And he would create the Word document and print it and post it and send it to the group email address, because it's not just Tia. But there's a group email address that goes to me and Chuck, the library, and Tia, so that it's also posted at the library.
Okay.
So he'll send a Word document to that whole group email address so everybody knows the library posted and then Tia is informed. So...
Who's responsible for posting it on the buildings, the post office?
Chuck. Like when he prints that Word document, he posts it at the buildings and he sends that email to the group email address. Or if somebody else is creating a posting, for example, when Sarah creates a notice that there's a ZDA meeting, she will email that to the posting group email. Chuck will notice that that is not one that he created. So he will do the paper posting, and then Tia's in that group and she will send it out via email.
Okay.
So that pretty much already runs itself. The trick is to make sure that boards and committees know to communicate with Chuck about meetings because if Chuck doesn't know it's happening, that's the thing to look out for. So as ex officios, you could be helpful in making sure that Chuck knows that you have a meeting on whatever your respective other committee or board is.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Let's see, so, oh, so just some security things. Thank you for sending in contacts, password changes, and keys. So we probably should plan to meet with you on Friday, what, at least one of us?
You're welcome to, but I've already printed out a receipt for me to Chuck and Chuck to sign. You can, somebody else can sign it if you want, but I did the same thing for Miles. Typically, I do that for anybody who's turning in keys and equipment. I write up a receipt and I sign it, and the other person signs it, and we both keep a copy. So I have that with Miles, I accepted his keys, I have his laptop. I've written up the receipt for all of the stuff that I know I need to return, which is a printer and a Bluetooth mouse and the laptop and power cord and my keys. So I will turn those, and he already has my credit card, and you saw that I already canceled my credit card at the bank. So you're welcome to be here for that, or do it instead of Chuck. It's up to you, but the receipt's all written out.
So you have the password access to everybody, like everything? So who's going to do that?
Tom LaBelle has the password access to everything. So, you know, here's the password to this device for the next person to open it up and see. Chuck knows the password to my computer. I would talk to Tom...
Gmail account?
He's a Google admin, so he can reset my password. And I instructed him to do that on Friday afternoon before he leaves. I won't know the password anymore.
Okay.
So actually, they'll delete it more like 1:00 in the afternoon.
So Tom LaBelle was already instructed for that?
No, no. So Tom LaBelle has all the passwords. So if you want passwords for anything, he has all the passwords. And he's the only one that has all of them. Some people might know some passwords, but Tom LaBelle knows all the passwords. Chuck is instructed to change my Google password. That's the only one I, you know, that's really up there hanging that he needs to do.
Good. All right, great, you're on, Paul.
Thanks.
Good. Oh, actually, a question for you. So you got my email about the revised revenue estimate?
Yes, I did, and I thank you for saying that. I haven't dealt with it yet because it's a busy day, but I will. You have the ambulance contract there, so it just needs a signature and upload that. Thank you for that. I just need to press a button in the portal with those numbers, and I will send you an email that it just needs your signature since you approved it at the meeting, and that's fine. Chuck, Chuck knows how to upload that, or I can upload that, and that'll be fine. So, and you have the MS1. I think you're all set then for the tax rate, except the water sewer district has the same bunch of documents due, and they know it and they're working on it. But they, that may end up holding us up. So there's nothing left for you to do as far as the tax rate is concerned at this point. Now it's up to Chuck when the time comes and the state reaches out to say whatever they have to say about questions.
Right, we're issued state right now.
Yeah.
So what about inputting their documents into the portal?
They have to do it. And they know to do it. We know they don't have a lot of staff, so it's always, they're often the ones to delay this process. We also need the school to do their part. They have plenty of staff, they don't typically hold us up. Actually, the county and the state often hold us up because, of course, we collect taxes on their behalf. So they have to get their paperwork done, and that all influences our process. So that's probably where we're at right now, is that until the state and county get their stuff done, it doesn't matter that the district and school probably aren't ready. But that should all happen within the next two or three weeks.
So the county portion, who goes up? The county. So they input, they input all their information separately?
In their own portal, but yet the state portal ties in all the things that affect us. So, you know, all the people in Stratford County will be tied into the county portal kind of behind the scenes in a way that we can't see or manipulate.
Okay.
Want to move the paths?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving to that. I think that's, that's all I have.
I got nothing, no?
Okay. So you said, so we have keys to that office and this blackboard office?
Just Chuck's office. There is a singular key that looks like all of these other big weird keys. And it's in the desk that's facing the window. It's in the top right-hand drawer. It's not labeled, it actually has a Goskey chain on it. And it goes to Chuck's office.
Okay, got it.
So feel free to use it, but put it back for the next person so you all know where it is.
Okay. And the other thing I got trouble with was building access. Somebody said there's only one key. Did George say there was one key?
For this back door.
So the door at the end of the hall, the interior door, is the same key as the front door. So that you can get into. It's just the outside door, which, when I hand in my keys, you'll be fine. Until then, the police chief has an elevator key now, so he had to head up the elevator to get in, but he doesn't have a key either. So we believe keys...
You have the one key to this side.
Yeah, well, and Chuck has one and Dan has one. And Andrea has one. So also, people do have them, but they're not a lot of them.
Okay, have a set of keys, but I guess presumably they're in the front.
Well, so the key to the back door looks like, more like a house key.
Okay.
Ready to swear, Ben?
We are.
You have just a minute?
Yes, I'm...
Less than two minutes.
Well, can we, or can we do it in here and bring the clerk in here?
Yeah, we've got him right behind us.
Sure.
And then everybody can benefit from this.
He looks nice, I think I seen him coming, let's cut that off.
So tonight, we have a special occasion. We are going to swear in William. Welcome.
Hello. Dan, where would you like us to stand?
Can we, can we frame you against the wall so we can...
That's fine, that's fine with me.
Well, you can take a wall.
I don't, I don't, I can't, we have a pen, yeah.
So basically, you're just going to raise your right hand and, and... Write your name.
Sure.
No pressure, Wayne.
Hopefully, your last name will be easier to pronounce in here.
It's really not.
Not at all. Maybe even work on that. I had never actually heard him would say it before.
What is yours?
Bonenberger.
Okay.
I can, I can work with that.
What's going on?
Yeah, that's a double.
Yes, it is.
So basically, I'm going to read this in sections, and then you'll just repeat after me.
Okay.
Okay? So you just raise your right hand. I, William Bonenberger.
I, William...
Go ahead.
I, William Bonenberger.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially...
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform all duties.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me as a police officer.
Incumbent upon me as a police officer.
And will comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
And will comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution, the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
The laws and ordinances of any subdivision thereof.
The laws and the ordinances of any subdivision thereof.
The judicial interpretation of those laws.
The judicial interpretation of those laws.
Rules and regulations of the Rollinsford Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Rollinsford Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
As a Rollinsford police officer to the best of my ability.
Of a Rollinsford police officer to the best of my ability.
Okay, you're sworn in. I will try not to stab him.
John, turn my number.
Yeah, John, your turn.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Right there in the first line.
Sure.
And then I'll sign in my line.
I think we should have the favor of your workshop while you're elsewhere.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Uh, where can I go?
Right in the...
I don't think we have anything to die, I think we should...
All right, thank you, everyone. Sure, I'll look like the sign, whoever.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations.
Do you have a statement you have to write?
Not downstairs.
Yeah, that's fine. But that might be one, but we could frame them both sides.
Thank you for letting us sneak in for a couple of minutes, I appreciate it.
Thanks, John.
Well, that's great.
Thanks.
So, do you have any other questions for, so Karen, are you available for questions until the end of the week?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
Okay.
Can you sign with your...
So there's only one, but, yeah.
Contract.
Excited about your new job?
I'm sorry?
Excited about your new job?
I am, thank you. I'm more excited about my week off with no job. Just one week, I know.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to take a month off.
So you both signed your contract?
Okay, so, if I could suggest that you talk about how you intend to do this and just think about whether you're doing one person at a time and two people are waiting in the hall, or is everybody in this room and maybe you're alternating who goes first to answer the question? Because there is a little bit of an advantage that if all three of your applications, if they're all here, you know, and the one person always gets to answer first, then maybe the others are benefiting from that person's answer?
Well, it's interesting you say that because I mentioned that last night, that we should, we really kind of give the candidates an opportunity to not be in the room or to be in the room without the other candidates. But we also can't, since it's a public meeting, we can't force them out of the room.
I'm not, you know, that's an interesting, I'm not sure about that, and would, you know, be good to check ahead of time on that because, you know, the point is the process is transparent. And so I wonder if you couldn't treat applicants different than residents, even though, of course, your applicants are residents? So I don't know, but...
So I thought we should put it out to the candidates to see how they feel about having everybody in the room or nobody in the room.
But you can't get rid of the public. Like, so you can see about, like, the candidates and what they want, but either way, the public gets this done.
Yeah, so it's up to, if the candidates want to stay, or we ask the questions, that's fine. If you feel more comfortable where one candidate stays and we ask the questions and the other candidate stays, just entitle it to you.
So, yeah, sure.
What if you did a roundtable sort of, so you ask a question and people take turns with different questions from first?
So we're limiting this to like 15 minutes per person? So I think, I think we want to keep it running, just, you know, a quick, me, you, read discussion with candidates.
And do you have Jody online? Because I see Jody's not here.
She's six. But she was going to try to call in. Jody, are you on the line?
I think you have to press star six to unmute yourself if they, if they're on the phone.
I think I can ask them.
Yeah, I don't know if they know. Yeah, there.
Jody, are you on the line? Okay, we'll give her a few minutes. So, let's ask the candidates if they have a preference about having the other candidates in the room. So...
We're going in two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, great, Jody is...
I don't care either way.
I don't either.
Whatever is easiest for you.
Alright, so we'll just fire away questions one and then-
Uh, but I, I see your point.
Like, maybe if you're gonna ask, you know, person A the first question first, then maybe the second person gets the second question.
You guys, you gotta handle it.
Thank you, Jack. And Jody, well, Jody's on the line.
She might be asleep.
How you doing? Yeah.
She's not feeling good.
She said she was sick.
Jack Doyle. Yeah.
You look very happy to be here tonight.
I look happy? Oh, good. Well, I have called it that. I've had three bad things though, so.
Well, they come with three, so you should be done.
You're done.
Okay, so I'll start.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna try to-
Denise, can you come up?
I can. Are we doing it separate or are we doing it together?
Nope, separate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Denise. I guess, my question, we were off. First question, but, um, if you weren't the chosen candidate tonight, would you still consider being run for the select board when the election comes up?
Yes.
Okay. That's the question, that's my first question. Do you have a?
I have one.
Okay. Well, I know, I know I'd asked Denise about her background, but I've worked with her and I know her background from the select board, so it's kind of straightforward for me. So I really don't have any specific questions. I mean, I don't even have a budget and, so I guess you can fire away your question then.
Okay. Um, so, so my question is, um, the same for everybody. What can you, what do you, what can you bring to the table that will help the town, the employees and the select board? And if you already served on the board, what would you do differently?
Well, I would bring fairness and respect. And, um, I try to work with everyone equally. I believe what I did on my three years on the select board was to bring all of that. And I have a very good working relationship with the department heads and, um, serving on the budget committee and, um, all of that. So, um, what I would do, are you asking me what I would do if I become a selectman in general?
Yes.
I think one of the bigger things that we need to work on is job descriptions, policies. We worked on policies. It's just kind of dragged out a little bit, but I think we're action on updating our policies and definitely updating job descriptions. And, um, still continuing to work with the department heads. I think when we had our, our meeting with each department head at, at, in an evening, we met at their, their location as a board. I thought that was very informative and also helped us understand what they're working with, where they're working, you know, what they're doing and seeing your equipment at the location which it was. And I think that that was really important and I know I learned a lot. And I think the departments appreciated us coming and doing that. And I look, I need to do that.
Um, so I'm gonna just kind of follow up with that. And, um, what do you think you can do to employ, um, improve employee relations within the town?
Employee relations within the town? As in with the employees versus the board?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I wasn't aware that we had a problem with the employee relations within the town. I think that a lot of, I think our town respects our employees. I'm not sure that there's any that they don't. I think that, you know, we just have to, if, we just have to encourage our residents to come to the board and discuss instead of doing it on Facebook. That would be my, you know, my request is if there's a problem, you can't solve it on Facebook, you need to come and see us. And then we'll talk about it and we'll work with the department heads and, you know, and whatever employee it pertains to. But we have to stop trying to run a business on Facebook. That's my-
Agreed.
My, uh, opinion.
Okay.
I just want to pause, find out that you've got Jody online, so I don't know if that's changing anything.
Well, I, I have to re-conversational entirely.
Which, yeah, which you can't really do. But you, you might take a moment to ask Jody if she wanted to follow the same process the other two have agreed to.
Jody, um, so we agreed on that the candidates would be outside the room. So you wouldn't necessarily hear each other's responses. So, um, I, I guess I can have you turn your speaker off, but I'm not really sure.
Yeah, like go, you know, drop off and come back when.
Yeah.
She can provide her phone number and somebody can text her to join back or something. But we can't require it.
Right, right, exactly, exactly. So, Jody, can I just ask you, let me ask you. Okay. Can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Okay.
Would you mind just turning your speaker off? Um, so, you know, just, we agree that each candidate would have a, um, you know, wouldn't hear the other candidate's responses.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'll give her a second. Looks like she's working on that.
There's no way really to tell if she does or doesn't.
Yeah, we have to trust her. Oops, she dropped off. Okay, alright. Um, so, the reason I asked the question is because, you know, having been here for a short time, I have had the opportunity to talk to some of the employees and, um, there, there were some people that were not happy with the last administration. So that's why I asked, what could, what could you do differently this time?
The administration is, is a team of three.
Right.
So whether or not it was me or Paul or Miles.
Agreed.
I don't know if you know which one it was.
No.
So it's hard to decide what-
Right.
To answer a question of that way if you don't know who or what the situation was. I certainly believe that I was honest and respectful to all employees in our town. And, um, and if it became, if it wasn't received that way, I didn't know it, so I can't change something I don't know.
So maybe just communication.
Yeah, absolutely. But if you don't know there's, you know, there's a problem, then it's hard to solve something that you don't know.
Right.
Our employees need to be more vocal about their issues.
Agreed.
You know, and, and I certainly haven't got a problem saying that. You know, if you have a problem with us, you need to tell us, you know, but sometimes employees don't like to hear the word "no."
Right.
And so that just gets them upset with you anyway, whoever they said it, whoever said "no," you know?
Agreed.
Um, so it's hard to pick something you're not aware of.
Right. Oh, I agree, okay. Um, I, I guess the, the answer was communication, but it has to be from both ends.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Paul, do you have a chance? Oh, okay.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Um, so, there's that one.
I was gonna say if you could come back on.
See you, Denise.
Can I tell him, come in?
Well, Jack, come in, I just think she's trying to run.
Yeah, please.
I think he went outside though.
I'll find him.
I thought he, he might have gone that way. I don't know.
So you won't be seeing, seeing any of the rest of us again, right? So I can go or do you want to stay?
Well, were you gonna try to make a decision tonight?
I think the goal was to do that.
So you might like wait and see if there's a decision.
Okay, alright, we'll do it.
I'm gonna think the decision's not gonna get to one there. So I got to digesting this.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine. Do you want, um, somebody want to take a second?
So, so-
That's fine.
I mean, we can talk in private.
Because we really have appointments. We do have appointments.
Yeah.
For planning board concern as well, so maybe we'll find a slot.
Okay.
Great. Alright, so I guess we'll have Jack in there and then, okay?
I think, I think John went out to find him.
Find him, I think they checked this way and stuff.
So no decision tonight?
No.
We can leave. Okay, so, alright. Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
If, if anybody has Jody's, um, last donation?
No, I think they were-
If, if it has to be six ten, it'll be six ten, yeah.
We'll make them stand in the hall.
I, I don't have, um, Jody's number, so I don't know if somebody else does that can transfer in a few minutes.
I do.
I do.
Okay, let's, let's, okay.
Hi, Jack.
Morning. Hey, guys.
Hi, Jack.
Hello. Hello. Have me calling my man?
No, nice to meet you.
Jack Doyle.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Hi, Jack Doyle.
That's Selma here. Um, so you want to ask-
I'll start first, yeah, I'll start the same question. So, Jack, if you, if you're not the chosen candidate tonight, would you still consider being run for the select board when it comes up for election?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
To be honest.
That, that's a fair question.
I mean, part of the reason I want to do it is to feel it out.
Okay.
Make sure I'm a good fit to you, you're a good fit to me.
Okay. So, so the last candidate I did work with, so I know her background a little bit, I'm just gonna ask a little bit about your knowledge of finances and how budgeting worked for you and basically your general knowledge of that.
Well, I've done budgets for thirty years.
Okay.
I run small companies, started only twelve people, grown them to six hundred people. Next company I had, I had a hundred, thirty-five people. Went to two thousand people. And I've done budgets my whole life. Small ones, large ones, prioritizing them, making it work.
Alright? So something like the kind of budget's not gonna, hasn't won, okay? And that's, that's what I really have.
We have, so we have a budget of about two point five million dollars.
I've done them from two hundred to a billion and a half.
A little bit bigger than what we have, but that's awesome. So my question was, um, if you were selected, what will you bring to the table for the town, the employees and the select board? If you've already run on this committee, what are you doing differently? Would you obviously run on the committee, so, so really, what is it you can bring to those things?
Well, let me start off by saying that I bring general management skills. I manage companies, I manage organizations, and that includes hiring people. I literally have hired hundreds of people. So I add that capability as well as managing the businesses. I'm good from a strategy point of view. And then I've bought companies and put them together and had to reorganize things, outsource things, move things around and set priorities. And in the financial acumen, I think I bring to the table. On the people perspective, I think I'm very objective. I'm not one-sided in my thinking, not biased, and I try and come up with the best solutions. Uh, I'm focused on the seniors of the town, but I'm also focused on the young people. At Northeastern University, I was on the board of one of their colleges and I spent my whole time mentoring kids in the inner city. So I've done, done all of that. So that's what I think I bring. Now, like, what I don't bring is the process that's being done in the town. That's gonna take me a little bit of time to get up to speed on. That, that's my downside.
Are, do you feel that you're a quick study?
Yes.
Because we're, well, we're learning as well, so Paul and I are also-
You're always learning. You're always kind of learning.
Well, um, first of all, I didn't know, you know, government.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is I don't know that aspect of it. And that's, that's something I gotta learn.
Yep, I was on the budget committee for five years and I still am learning about the budget process and, um, you know, some of the things that Caroline knows, we certainly don't know. Um, you know, management of revenue, that's all, um, you know, things that we're gonna have to learn together.
I do have one request though, that if I do get this position, that I can maybe get a couple hours with you over this day.
Absolutely.
Just kind of do a download on my own.
I would hope so.
Alright.
Well, she's done on Friday.
I'm done on Friday, but, but it is really important. I, I really appreciate that intention because, um, there are some things about roles and responsibilities of board members that are important to know. So, absolutely. We made time.
And you're talking about boards and select boards. I've been on public company boards, private company board, charitable board, I've been my own charity, I've done all of those things.
That's all I have, Jack.
Oh, I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, enjoy your afternoon, goodnight.
You too. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all. Bye.
Thank you.
Take your money.
Alright, so maybe Jody back?
Carrie, did you say that you were able to text Jody?
I think Nancy's, Nancy's gonna grab it.
Okay. Hey, can we? Hi, Jody. Hi, Jody. Um, I think you were unmuted. Wait, no, when you're connecting, one second. Can you unmute, Jody?
Hello?
Hi, Jody.
Hi, Jody.
I apologize for not being there.
You were sick.
Okay, no one wants to get sick.
I was doing better, thanks.
Alright.
Alright, hi, Jody. So I'll start off with a quick question for you. Um, if you not, if you were not the chosen candidate tonight, would you still be considering to run for the select board when it comes up for election?
Sure.
Okay. Um, and can you just, can you just give me a little bit of your background in managing finances, budgets, since I had, I'd have worked with Denise on select board and I really haven't worked with you, but I know you've had experience on select board, just give me a quick rundown of that, please?
Yeah, we were more hands-on then. Um, I took over for Ed Jansen and that was transitioning to give more of the, um, day-to-day stuff and authority to Caroline. I was a little leery of that then just because of what's happening now. When we were on, Ed Jansen had even said you're gonna need a town administrator or a town manager or something. When he's gone, because you need, you need to be there. And so we had our division of labor and, um, everybody had a piece, so we all did something. I was putting in probably two and a half days a week. Um, some, some, some weeks nine and some weeks I had nine o'clock meetings at Langford River. Joint WOS. I was also, um, we expanded our highway market, that's when we hired George. And a few months later, Ed. We collaboratively put the budget together. At the time Suzanne took the lead on that. We did our budget workshops. At the time I was on CIP, REC, uh, Joint WOS and Langford River. Before that, I was on the budget committee for many years. Couple of years after I moved into town.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got my questions answered.
Okay. Um, so Jody, uh, my question is, um, if you were selected, um, what do you feel you can bring to the table for the town, the board and the employees? And if, um, you have already been on this committee, what would you do differently?
Um, I'm still representative of people. Some of the things that we did, we, we've been managed by emergency. Three days after I got elected, I got a call from Chief Ushar that the high school was on fire. What do you do with that? So, um, I was also, oh, I was also part of emergency management with, um, fire, the fire fleets too. And the board has this role in that. Voting for the people, it wasn't an agenda. It was, if they came to the meeting and it was their opinion, I listened to that, because I'm representing that. You're representing that, and I'm not. So it wasn't my agenda. My agenda, I never went in with this is what I want to do, this is what I want to help manage. Once the budget, I felt that once the budget was set, you're really just doing day-to-day operations and trying to find cost savings.
So, given a different administration...
The transfer station.
I'm sorry, we heard the transfer station and then you cut out...
Oh, I'm sorry. At the time, the transfer station was being revamped. That's when we put in a second compactor to save falling fees. And I know that structure has changed since then, but I bring the experience of having to do some of the day-to-day operations, more so than the previous administration, because after I had left, it was pushed more and more to employees. And in a circumstances, now we're going to be into that same emergency management style for a couple of weeks, at least, hopefully a week, a couple of weeks, if we can find somebody to help fill that role into what role that capacity is. I'm not sure where that'll... The board will decide on that.
So, what do you think that you could do to improve employee relations? Any thoughts about that? And how do you feel relations were when you were on the board?
Between employee and employee or employee and select... Or employee and town?
Everybody. Employee and employees within the town. So between employees to employees and employees to the select board? What was your feel about their satisfaction here?
I felt we needed to do more retention. I wanted to give dental benefits, which is about $4,000. In three years' time, we couldn't come up with $4,000 for them to have dental. Every other town, every other city and town offers dental. It was quite embarrassing for me to not have my employees have dental. And when I was a selectman, I felt that they weren't my employees. Those were the people that I was supposed to be taking care of as much as they're taking care of us. And that meant a lot. We had to change our insurance at the time. They were having five other co-pays and those aren't more options anymore. Going up to ten, things up to twenty now. So that changed, too. So that kind of cost wage adjustments. And then, in a departmentally, it got better. Things got better, I think, from my end. I sat down, when I first got elected, I sat down with the fire. I sat down with... I looked and... And I sat down with police, Rachel, Kate, and Andrea and Caroline at the time, just to see day-to-day operations.
You kind of cut out there a little bit in that last sentence, but I get the gist of it.
Sorry.
No?
Okay. Alright, I don't have another...
No, I don't either. Hope you feel better about it.
Okay. Thanks, Jody.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you so much. So again, I appreciate all you guys are doing right now. You're in a tough spot.
Okay. So we are not going to decide on the candidate until Monday's meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, after eight, night everybody.
You too. Bye.
Bye-bye.
And I'll be the first person to say, as... I have to now say, digest all of these people, my notes, and then we'll talk in public about what we think we're going to say. Is that... That's what they said we have to do, so... Yeah.
And I did reread the email and we said case law, that Attorney Buckwheat stated, and yeah, it makes sense. So I did not reach out to the municipal association.
So this gentleman, I mean, we're taking community input, assuming that his end up or should we ask him?
Do we want to... Well, do we... Before we close out this election?
Yeah, let's close it.
You want to talk about this particular part?
Okay.
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion, unless there's any other business coming for us to close our meeting, so we start at six.
Okay, sure.